Well, good morning, everybody. This is the first of two work sessions for Governance for Peachtree. And the second, as you may have seen from the emails, going to be June 3rd. And we'll be with our attorney from Altitude Law, Amanda Ashley. And this is intended to sort of be a Governance 101 and prepare for that session with her. So we'll be doing questions, so. Before I do that, though, for folks who will see this on YouTube, let me just give a quick update on some things. The Advisory Committee on Plants, Trees, and Edging has gotten off to a great start. And you, I think they've got six or so folks working on that committee. It is not too late to sign up for that committee. If you're interested, please contact me or Rochelle for information about joining. And, and, and look at your previous email from Rochelle and me that gives contact information for the co-chairs Laura and Ken Taylor. Another update, the flower beds have been planted or are about to be finished being planted, including the sign and entrance way at Peachtree and the mailboxes. And we have got the watering system started and working again after much work. So it shouldn't require as much hand watering as in the past. We have just contracted with Hydro seeding from Western Hydro seeding, and they will begin their work towards the end of the month. And surprisingly inexpensive to get that done, so there you go. And second, we, another update, we've just completed the signing of the insurance documents. So certificates for mortgage companies and whatnot should be available soon. And the final minor item to comment on is we have ordered metal post weed eater guards for our, to protect our new fence. And an example of that has been installed, both a plastic one, which you could ignore, but the metal one is in black and it is at the fence at our north drainage area near building Q and S, something like that. Anyway, it's easy to see what that's going to look like. We'll be installing 125 of those in the coming days. Otherwise, all of the work is on schedule in June. We will be having the driveway aprons lifted to, so we avoid trip hazards for the garage. And then following that will be the major concrete work. And also in June, we'll start with replacing the stair treads at the stack unit buildings. So that is the update. In other words, everything seems to be on schedule.
I have a question, Steve.
Yeah.
With those metal, oh, what, I don't know what you call them, edgings. When will those be put down?
We have ordered those and I expect we'll have them in a couple of weeks. And we're going to look for volunteers to help install those.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm, I'm hoping it'll happen quickly. They're easy to install and a little bit of drill work and there you go, so.
Okay.
But I'm hoping we'll get those in the next two weeks. So. So the agenda is to you do a high level overview of our governing documents. And then I think we'll, we'll look at our draft rules and regulations. And while I start identifying key questions for our governing documents, which I'm loading up for that June 3rd meeting. And that leads up to hopefully draft documents being released to the community on or about June 5th. And then being available for the board to adopt and implement at its meeting on June 18th. In 2026, I think we will be looking at a process for revising our covenants and bylaws. Because as you can see from the top here, our covenants were adopted and bylaws were adopted in 1987. And many components of them no longer comport with existing law. And/or technology has changed. No one envisioned emails in 1987 or online meetings. So lots to do there that are both necessary and good. So. So there are a lot of sources pertaining to governance. And the Department of Regulatory Agencies for the state of Colorado, their real estate division has what's called the Colorado HOA Information and Resource Center. And their website is really good, but what is really good is their YouTube channel. And I would highly encourage any owner who's interested to visit their YouTube channel. In January, they released a YouTube channel that are, of YouTube video on HOA governance. Altitude Law, our law firm, has a blog and newsletters that are really good. And lots of key information there that's available. The, the National Association of HOA Managers has a Colorado Division called the Colorado Association Institute. And they provide a lot of information and guidance. And that's where property managers go to get their continuing education and training. And then Centennial Consulting Group has an FAQ on their website that I think is helpful. And they just did a board member education a month ago that I understand the video of that is going to be available soon. And I thought that was very well done. So to make things short and quick, this is an excerpt from the video from the HOA Resource Center from February. I might've said January, it was actually February 28th, where they show the hierarchy of governing documents. So the plat map, the declaration, which is on our website, is there. So our, the declaration is the same term as covenants. There's articles of incorporation, then the bylaws, and then the policies and procedures. The state of Colorado requires that HOAs have nine policies. And then the HOAs' rules and regulations that flow from the covenants, the bylaws, and the policies and procedures. And then all of this is governed by the Colorado Common Interest Ownership Act, often referred to as KYWA. And we are a pre-KYWA HOA, meaning our HOA existed before KYWA was adopted. And so there are certain provisions that will apply to us and certain that don't. But the the key thing our attorney says is it really doesn't matter. Because if we get into a dispute, many judges will look at KYWA and apply it even if you're a pre-KYWA entity. And they do so in error, but they nonetheless do it. Good morning, Gary, we're just getting started. You haven't missed.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, I'm late to the table here. I got, I was on another call.
Well, I was giving you the excuse that you might have still been suffering the mumbo gumbo. How are you feeling, Mr.?
I'm not great, but I'm, I'm here, I'll hang out.
All right, well, this is endlessly fascinating, so I'm sure it will make you feel better, so.
Just what I need.
So, so we're, we're talking now about our nine governing policies. And many of them, I think all, seven of them emanate from when I was last Board President in April of 2020. And then there's two that were adopted in 2023. And then one that is unsigned, but is adopted in 2024. And unsigned is really important because it's unenforceable unless it's signed. The, the state of Colorado has a tendency, the legislature, to play with HOA ability to collect unpaid assessments and to do enforcement. Because there's been some really egregious acts by various HOAs to foreclose on property owners with unpaid assessments. And so they've been changing that. The other thing that's not in the nine required policies, but pragmatically is required, is a towing policy for vehicles that are left unattended on our property, which has happened to us over the years, most recently this last spring. And they keep messing with that. So you'll see that in our rules and regulations that we're going to have to have a towing policy. So, hold on. Linda, are you trying to join? Well, we're in our webinar right now, so I can't do anything about it. If you want to call the, the hotline for Green Earth, that would be great. That's in my email from the May 20, May newsletter, so. Yes, well, I think the newsletter's out on the kiosk, I don't know. So anyway, I got to drop because, because I'm in my webinar. All right. Did anybody have any questions? Before I roll on? So I want to focus on our rules and, and regulations. And because I, I think that's probably the most meaningful thing we have going on. And let me, let me do the Zoom trick here. Why can't I find my Zoom? Okay, here we go.
So. Oh, better, yes.
Yeah, so sorry about that. So what I sent out was the clean copy. This is the redline version from our attorney, so. So I, I, I'm just going to flail away here and you guys can stop it and ask questions. I think our first problem that we need to address is many owners do not know what they own. And they think they have ownership of the exterior of their units when they, when they, when they don't. You, what you have is a fractional ownership. I own 1/70 of the tree that's in front of my office window here. I own 1/70 of the backfill area. And, and, and by own, I mean, I have only the ability to elect the Board of Directors as to what's done with that. And so owners have treated their areas around their units as their, their own property. And we have a lot of non-compliance with our covenants and our rules and regulations. And of course, the, the, the key question is how, how vigorous do we enforce that? Because you can find probably something on virtually every one of our units that is impermissible. So some things are more dynamic than others, such as safety issues, where we have extension cords being used where they shouldn't be. Maybe that's something that rises to the level of enforcement. But if somebody has plants or edging that isn't right, we've sort of had a tendency to let that go. But I do think we could do a better job of either in this document or in other, the welcome packet, really making it clear what you own as a unit, internal to your unit, what you are responsible for, and and, and what is the HOA's control. It has been recommended by CCG that we have Altitude Law do a chart of ownership, responsibility, and insurance. So it's more clear as to what is yours and what is under the control of the HOA and the board. So that's my first thought. Second, is the use of condominium units. Our covenants say that they are exclusively for a single family. And you cannot have multiple unrelated persons living in the units. Altitude Law says that's impermissible. And you cannot restrict occupancy to a single family slash related individual. We need to dig deeper into that just because other sources say that HOAs can restrict to related individuals. And, and, and then we have never enforced the requirement that our lease agreements be on file with our management company. And I, I think that no matter what we do with who can rent and lease, I do think we need to have that requirement enforced, that those lease agreements be on file. And then the, the greater than 30 days, I don't recall where that comes from. That seems really short to me. But that may come from our covenants and, and we're stuck with that. Any comments before I roll on?
I was just going to say that my experience down here in Denver is that that all leases do go to the management companies. So they have a record of who's in the units. And that most leases have to be for a year. So I don't know if, you know, they don't want, they don't want churning going on and Airbnb's going on and.
So, so this, this may be something that comes up via review of our covenants next year.
Yeah.
Or we may find that Altitude Law is being too stringent in their interpretation, and we have greater latitude. It gets dodgy when we're going to try to create something that doesn't flow from our covenants. And if our covenants are prima facie in, in, unenforceable because of the definition of family not being workable, we may be just be in, in a sort of no man's land here.
Well.
I do think it is important to note that, that the, the HOA cannot restrict home-based businesses to the extent that, you know, that they are not creating a noise nuisance and so forth, so. The good neighbor policy has really been a problem for us. From barking dogs to other failing to clean up after pets and whatnot, loud noises, et cetera. We've never, to my knowledge, tried to enforce the good neighbor policy. But I think it's probably important to have in case something gets way out of hand, so. I don't know where the prohibition on cultivation of marijuana comes from. I think that's been in our rules and regs from the start of our complex. I'm not sure that makes a lot of sense. Except that I've, in the good old days, when it was illegal, I guess they would come in and take over a, a property and, and basically run it as a greenhouse for illegal growing. So, but if somebody wants to grow a plant, I don't. I don't know, I don't know how we deal with that. I don't know if it's meaningful for us to keep that in. The next item has gendered a lot of controversy about our prohibition for barbecues and grills. And I guess I'd like to tell you what, what we have with our insurance requirement, because our existing policy is more stringent than our insurance requires. And, and I, I'm told the rationale for that was that it was because certain units would not be able to have a barbecue grill under any circumstance. It was fairer than to make it prohibited on any unit or any part of the property. And second, there was a concern about how you would get folks to comply with the insurance requirements. And would they just inherently be leaving barbecue grills out in the open? And would jeopardize our insurance? So what does our insurance actually require? Both the travelers and our current insurance that will be with Arch Insurance Company specify that barbecue grills cannot be used within 10 feet of a building wall. Or, and, and cannot be used if there is any overhanging balcony or tree limb that is 20 feet or less. And so, or maybe it's 15 feet or less. Anyway, you can't have, so, so what does that mean? Technically, I have a gas port on the back of my patio and I could run a gas line, flexible gas line, around to my driveway and, and barbecue out on my driveway and not violate our insurance. Now, I would have to keep the barbecue grill in my garage. I, you can't, the, the insurance is going to continue, especially with its new carrier, to do spot inspections and drone flights. And a barbecue grill that's on a patio is going to be presumed to be operating. And that jeopardize ours, our insurance. So I, I could keep my gas, my, my natural gas barbecue in my garage. And technically we would do that. The, the second thing we could do is we could have a community barbecue. So if you think about the area where our willow tree is down behind building C, you could have a community barbecue there. Probably needs to be gas driven because the way the fire seasons rolls, you get prohibitions on charcoal use. But that would be an option for us as well. So I want to stop there. I know, John, you wrote me a very thoughtful long email on this subject and, and just let you guys ask questions. And hopefully I didn't butcher that explanation.
So is that specifically for gas or does that apply to electric as well?
You, you can't have any form of cooking or heating device within 10 feet of a building wall or under an overhanging tree limb. So that applies to everything. But if you want to have an electric grill and use it outside of those parameters, that's permissible. And I, I think it is so over the top because the electric grills have no history of causing, they don't produce a flame. And, and so they should be permissible, but, but our insurance, and so this is wrong, creates an open flame is, is incorrect. Our insurance would not allow any form of electric grill, so. Unless it's 10 feet away or it's not under a hanging tree limb, so.
Well, like I said in my letter, it just, it seems funny that like with my George Foreman grill that's made for indoors, I can go in and throw it on the counter, but I can't use it outside on my patio. Just seems strange.
No sense whatsoever. And is anybody ever going to enforce that you can't have your George Foreman grill out on your patio? I don't think so. So, you know, I'm not saying we wouldn't, but
Right, okay.
You know, there's reasonableness here that has to come into play. So, but I think if we were to have something other than this stringent, absolutely no barbecue grills or anything whatsoever, I think it would require some, some certification, application by an owner, that they would sign off they're going to meet these parameters. Because first thing you do is you say you could have it 10 feet, but they would leave the barbecue out on their patio. And we just can't jeopardize our insurance with that. So I think we'd have to have owners say, I want to take advantage of this latitude and I'm willing to meet these criteria. There's, there's also Pooter Fire Authority rules that come into play. And I don't know where they stand on propane, large propane bottles being stored in garages. I know you can have the camp-sized propane in your house and store. Everybody does that who's into camping, but I don't know about the large propane bottles, so. So I'm, I'm interested in the board's thoughts, owner's thoughts about whether it's best to keep this broad prohibition or if we want to allow more latitude and do something like I described with our owners certifying. And second, is there any interest in having a community barbecue place?
Well, Stephen, first of all, I, I don't know that a community place could work. Because then who'd be responsible for maintaining it, cleaning it? You got somebody that goes there, uses the grill and just leaves it a mess. Then the next person goes there and they've got to clean this thing up. There's nobody who's going to manage it. I, I think that's, that's all a bad, bad idea. Not to designate, here's a thought, to designate a place where you could barbecue and people could bring their own barbecue there to barbecue. But at that point, you'd probably be using charcoal or you could bring a portable propane tank there and maybe, you know, designate an area to do that. But as far as a grill itself, I, I don't see that working. I mean, it works in timeshare units because you've got management there that maintains it and cleans it. But in this case, I think it'd be a bad idea.
Yeah, I that, that's my knee jerk reaction too, is and of course, if you've got a barbecue, then that leads to people being around it and, and make. I, I think this is a real question for actually the, in part, the advisory committee. Because I, I know they're thinking about what do we do with that area where the willow tree was? That could be some form of community area. So I, I, I think I'm inclined to want to punt it to the advisory committee. Also, CCG is developing or has a survey tool that we could use to get owner input. But I, I'm kind of in your camp about having something like a, a, a fixed gas grill. So I guess, I don't know. Now, you got any thoughts?
I'm staying out of it because I don't actually live there. But no, I tend to agree with you that there will be people who will use it and just walk off. And then assume somebody else will take care of it.
Well, and who pays for the gas? Because I don't think a charcoal thing would be the way to go. So anyway, lots of things to think about there, so. And again, I'm going to zoom. So these are in the unsightliness realm. And we have to allow owners to put signs in their windows, I believe. I, I don't know about signs external. Whether those are permissible, I, I, I'm looking at these pink comments are from Altitude Law. So I don't, I don't know, I think that's a question. What does hung per unit mean? Can you have a sign? And we've allowed real estate signs out on the lawns. But I don't know if you wanted to have a sign protesting something. If you would be allowed to have that out on your lawn or something you have the right to put in your window. So I think that's a question for Altitude Law. We cannot absolutely restrict clotheslines, that seems reasonable to me, so. And then we get into the alterations. And they use the term ACC form. I think our actual term is ARC form, but that's nitpicking. I thought it was interesting that we cannot prohibit awnings over windows, so. And then satellite dishes. We can't prohibit. But they can be kept to a reasonable size. And then there's a comment here about temporary seasonal decorations. What is she saying there? Temporary is vague. Specific timeframe. I personally think we should just delete that. I don't understand. You know, I guess it's intended for somebody who's intent on keeping Christmas decorations up year round? I don't know. I don't, it seems like we're chasing something there that's, that's hard. This new bullet point comes from when we had our roofing project. We had owners disputing whether we needed to replace our roofs due to the hailstorm. And they were climbing up on the roofs and inspecting their own shingles. And we, we had to put a stop to that. And I think this makes sense to keep because we could have contractors coming in and doing work that, and being up on our roofs that we need to be aware of and, and prohibit, so. So windows and exteriors, I think is pretty reasonable. The garage doors are to be kept closed at all times. By the way, stop me anytime if you guys got a comment. This is a major problem for us. We have people using their garage doors as ventilation and they keep them open in the evening. In fact, all night sometimes, often. And that creates a security risk for our property. And, um, it's in our covenant. We don't have a choice on this. This has to be, um, uh, part of our rules and regulations, but we haven't enforced it. And I don't know what to think about that. I, I know that once you have one theft, you become a magnet for more. And we've had a lot of uh, things stolen out of garages on the property over the last two years. Because of open doors. Any thoughts, questions?
Nope.
So the, the vehicle parking has been a problem. We've had people parking on lawns, um. We've had people parking in areas that are not permitted, um. So I think we have to, we have to continue to keep those in the regs. Uh, RV parking has been a problem for us, people keeping RVs and what constituted RV, I think that needs to be defined because one person's Sprinter van is not an RV. It's a Sprinter van, but it, but it's used for camping. I don't know what, what goes on with that, so. And we've had commercial trucks being parked on our property, um. We've, we have not enforced this provision that commercial trucks are to be parked on Carlton. And frankly, I don't know why that's a bother. If it's a regular sized vehicle and it's got a name of a company on it, John's repair service, I don't know why we care that it shouldn't be in somebody's driveway, you know? That that seems nitpicky to me, so. And then we have our new towing policy. Which is very aggravating, but, um, for safety and other reasons, it's recommended that we have it, but the signage is challenging, uh, to maintain. The legislature keeps changing it. And I, I don't wanna read through this with you. You guys can look at it in the, in the draft document that I sent if you want. So I'm not gonna bother with that, so. So any questions before we move on? Uh, to the next item?
Not for me.
Okay. So, um, I think, I think we have an ongoing problem with people driving faster than ten miles per hour routinely in the property. As particularly with delivery vehicles, um, um, so. One of the answers that could have happened there is we have a proposal for putting up security cameras that we'll be talking about at our June eighteenth meeting. And those security cameras could help us deal with owners or visitors who are consistently driving way too fast for our property, so.
Will, will those security cameras determine speed? Will they be able to, to tell you how fast they're going?
Well, they are high resolution and if somebody's driving twenty mile an hour, you can definitely tell it's faster than ten, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And I would say we've had owners driving thirty mile an hour in our property, so. So the trash thing, um, I think is pretty straightforward. Monday is our new trash day. I don't know that we wanna be specific as to the day because that seems to be subject to change and, yeah, we can talk about that, so. That's our problem, uh, with people not cleaning up after them. Uh, and I think we should enforce that when it's a consistent, uh, problem that's not being resolved, so. Otherwise, I thought what we have currently and what they, what Amanda's recommending, um, is fine, so. So moving on, okay? This too is a problem, feeding of wildlife. Uh, we have an owner who is just cannot be controlled. Um, she puts up feeders for squirrels and they just create a giant mess and they attract vermin and, uh, yeah, so. What I think is missing from the rules and regulations is the broad prohibition that owners cannot, and this is in our covenants, cannot do anything that would jeopardize our insurance. And I, I think that needs to be in our rules and regulations. So I wanna ask Amanda about that, so. So that's our rules and regulations discussion.
So what, what is the, um, uh, on this feeding of pets, what is the, uh, uh, punishment if they continue to do it?
Uh, we have to take photo, date and timestamp, and it just follows our normal enforcement policy that you get a notice. And then if you don't cure it, you have a seventy-five dollar fine and then it elevates from there and so forth. It's a, it's our normal, uh, policy. So we have, um, a, a little bit of time left and I wanna talk about, uh, some priorities, uh, for our, um, uh, policies. Uh, I, I, as I said in my email, I think it's really important that we have, um, as much requirement for transparency as possible. And, and I, and I've been very blunt about this. I, I thought the way that the budget went about being passed last year was appalling. And, um, was very inconsistent with what the HOA has done. And I have to admit, I haven't paid attention the last few years, but from the previous time, there'd always been a work session that was open to owners. And in fact, we had town halls where we presented various scenarios to owners to consider. And to have it done in total secret, which it was, um, is a, I just don't wanna have that happen again. Now, a future board can come in and change these policies. And we're stuck. So it's something that has to be addressed long-term in our bylaws and covenants. But I really feel like we need, um, clear um, requirements for notice of meetings and that all work sessions be open to owners uh, to, to at least observe, if not participate. And that, um, we, we don't have anything conducted in, in secret. So the governing policy that has been sent around, I don't think is as complete as it should be. And we have a separate governing policy I sent in the email for conduct of work sessions. And I don't know if that needs to be a separate deal or if it can be incorporated in the new policy for conduct of meetings. But, uh, and the other thing is the policy addresses member meetings and regular board meetings, but it doesn't address special meetings that the board can call, um, to deal with an urgent matter or a single topic matter. And I think that should be clearer. Uh, the other thing that, that is not in our policy uh, is that we are, whether or not we should be governed by Robert's Rules of Order. And I, I think we should since it's really clear what those are, um, but uh, we're, we're sort of at a loss on, on challenges like when a board member wants to, to change their vote on something. Can they do that? Our policies don't speak to that at all now and Robert's rules does, so. I, I do think it's also important that we have really clear parameters on what the board uh, can do outside of meetings and how that process works. And that's governed by Kiowa in part. Um, and, and I think we should, uh, be really clear on that. And the new policy doesn't seem to be as clear as our existing policy. And this is that draft policy for, um, boardwork sessions. And I don't think it's as precise as it should be. I think there should be a notice requirement that it's ten days that owners have to be given, uh, notice of the work session. Uh, if not, you know, and ideally longer than that, but at a minimum ten days, so. So that's the story. Um, you can look through the other policies and, but I think they're very straightforward and you know, our dispute resolution policy, our reserve policy, our policy for investment of reserve funds. All of those to me are non-controversial. Our enforcement policy is totally governed by uh, statute and regulation. We don't have any latitude there, uh, and, um, our, uh, uh, non-payment of dues, how we deal with that, that's all out of our control. So a lot of this to me is really straightforward, having the policy on how we adopt policies, you know, I think is something that's straightforward. So I think many of these are easy to look at and, and, and non-controversial. So I think that's it for now. Um, we'll be with Amanda and uh, anxious to take questions from owners about where we're at. Again, I'll put this video up on our YouTube channel and send out an email, making it available and, um, uh, look forward to potentially having a, everything completed and out for owner comment on or about June fifth and for action on the June eighteenth meeting, so. So, uh, I'm going to stop the recording now and,